I'd like to call over to the regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority. Roll call please.
Wines. Marshall, here. White.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Delbeck. Vaughn.
Here.
Goldarn. Stroller.
Here. I do declare a quorum. We join me in invocation this evening. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to be able to meet here and do the city's work. We just ask that you clear our minds and help us make the best decisions for our municipality and it will better our community. Dear heavenly Father, we also like to just take a moment and remember what's going on overseas right now, pray for those people. It's a terrible situation and we just want you to have your hand in that. We pray all this in your son's name, Jesus Christ, amen. All right, number one is the consent agenda. There's a couple items there.
Motion, Jeffrey.
Second.
Roll call.
Marshall. Yes. White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Comments from those assembled? None? Proclamation, condenation, reports required by the governing body? No? Presentation of the City of Perry, Perry Development Authority, FY 21 Gatsby 34 Audit Report by CBEW Professional Group, LLP.
He's gonna need to call in.
Question, so let's not phone with this.
Is your synced?
Yes.
Okay.
So, were we having like a conference call or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what's the number? You can call. Chuck Cruz.
Is this what's calling? Turn your volume down.
Hello, everyone.
Oh, my goodness.
We are going to take your call. Please wait a minute after the tone.
Turn your volume down.
Mine is down.
So, you just want to recess and come back later or what, Bryce?
Yeah, let me get this set up and we'll do it on the city side. And then we'll recess out of this authority and we'll come back and approve it after we do it on the other side.
Okay. All right, I need a motion to recess the PMA, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Marshall. Yes. White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to call over to the regular meeting of the City Council of City Perry, February 24th, 2022, at 6:21. Roll call, please.
Wines. Marshall.
Here.
White.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Delbeck. Vaughn.
Here.
Goldarn. Stroller.
Here. I do declare a quorum. Item number one is the consent agenda. There's four items there.
I make a motion, that would be a prayer to the Senate. Consider agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Comments from those assembled pertaining to the city agenda? Hearing none. Proclamation, condenations, reports required by the governing body? Seeing none of that either. We are going to skip over item six because that's what Bryce is trying to take care of now. We will go to item seven, the city managers' report.
Thank you, sir. You've noticed the equipment in the poly pipe that's beside the Stillwater Specialty Clinic and Sister Spirits does the work on a sinkhole there and repair that. Everything's in place. All the documents for the contractor have been received. We're just waiting on some decent weather, which hopefully it looks like might get that next week. So, we're excited about that and getting gone and moving on. O'Reilly's is now open in their new location in Perry Plaza. They've worked on that since probably last Tuesday, I believe. So, we're excited about having that. A great time with, to be in Perry. It's exciting times. As Brian Henry mentioned earlier in our planning commission, God loves it's about to break ground next week and then we'll discuss Dollar General, Family Tree tonight. We're excited about that as well. Want to mention again, Perry Recycle's inaugural event will be Saturday at the Armory, 10 o'clock till noon. What you normally do is we have the list of items that we're going to accept on Facebook. Whatever you have to recycle, that's those items. You wash them out, put them in a bag, put them in your car, truck, and bring them to us. We'll take them and go from there. So, it should be a real short process for everyone that wants to volunteer, I mean, you know, to participate in this. So, we're excited about that. We have a program that will be coming up in March where if we can get 250 participants, there will be a trade donation from this company that we've been partnering with. So, excited about that. Any comments or anything, questions?
On Saturday, is it just plastics only or is it several?
It's, it's, number one, plastics. You know, you look at the little triangles, number one. Also, it's not even just the Coke bottles or the plastic water bottles. It's also clam shells. You know, you got to come back to put your pie in there, wash that out, put that, bring that. Number two, plastics, which are your tied jugs, you know, that kind of thing. Aluminum cans, metal cans, cardboard, and chipboard. You know, cardboard, you know what that is, but chipboard is what you go to Brahms and you buy some ice cream or something that, like the bars, that package, that's it. You can put, those two, you can put them all together. It's going to be real fast, hopefully.
Awesome.
And we, we'll have a signup, a volunteer sheet, an application called signup genius. And if you want to volunteer, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right.
Are we ready, Bryce?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I had, I had Facebook up and I was waiting on them to.
Okay.
I don't know where they are.
Okay, we're right here, Russ. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I'm right here too.
Great. Well, you're at the council meeting and everyone can hear you.
Are we ready to start item six?
You're cutting out Barbara quick. Yes, he is.
We're going to go back to six. Item six's presentation is City of Perry, Perry Development Authority, FY 21 Gatsby 34 Audit Report by CBEW Professional Group. Okay, now we can do, we can do both of them.
Yes. Okay, it's, it's time to start the audit report. Chuck, begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Did you get a copy of it? I mean, I should have been emailing that thing. This year, I want to thank you again for letting us do your audit. Chuck with CBEW. The federal government does no favors in handing out their guidance on the single audit. Not even getting it out till late December, so that's why the audit took them a while to get done. Even in their incident wisdom, I just wanted to let you know that the reason there is a single audit is since the grant wasn't awarded until the year, this year started, it still affected whatever expenditures happened in the prior year. So, we had to test a bunch of expenditures from the prior and the current year in order to do all the single audit work that was necessary. The audit report itself is a clean opinion. You know, the financials are direct reflection of City of Perry. And as far as the internal control compliance areas, we didn't have any issues on internal control compliance and didn't have any areas in the single audit portion where we were testing the federal program, any problems with internal control compliance. Overall, it went pretty good there. Trying to get the single audit portion done was kind of rough, but we were able to get through it and get it done. I think you're our first out of like 10 that we have to get done. Just glad to get them done this year.
Yeah, are there any questions from the council? There were no material findings, which is good. It's an unqualified opinion, which is good. I would say that it's all pretty good. Would you agree, Chuck?
Yes, I think everything went really well.
All right, well, thank you. Okay, so we need to, a motion to accept and authorize filing of the, the audit. We'll do it on the city side now and we'll go back into the PMA's.
So moved.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
And Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I'd like a motion to recess the, or the city council and we'll go back into the PMA.
So moved.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Okay, item. Number six in the PMA, we also need a motion to accept and authorize filing of the.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Okay, item seven in the PMA, any new business that needs to come before the authority this evening? Hearing none. Motion on item eight.
Motion, Jeffrey. Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Stroller.
Okay, motion to call the city back into order.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. We're going to have a Rusty report.
Yes, Russ, you're prepared to do a report. Chuck, if you're still on, you can drop off and if, and if, Russ, you drop off, I'll call you right back.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item eight is the chief financial officer's report.
Go ahead, Russ.
Okay, got it done. Sorry to have to not be there, but with the road security thing, I was not going to spend six hours coming to Perry today to give you this quick piece. I will say that trying to watch it on Facebook at the same time as trying to listen to it, it's about a 10 second delay. So, when we're looking at it, I'm watching you do something, then all of a sudden Bryce talks in my ear, "Hey, time to talk." So, you know, just a handful of little things that I'll point out this month on the financials. The biggest thing that I will, that I'll start out with is our February self-tax came in at about $243,000. If you put that on the same side, remember we went from three and a quarter to four percent self-tax. We haven't seen a number that large since 2016. So, we're going on five years since we've seen a self-tax number of largest, as well we just received this last month. Now, I'm not saying that that's, that's great news for them, but we don't know where that could continue. Also, remember that this money, red money that was generated in December, so it's Christmas sales and those kind of things. But hey, people are shopping at home, that's good news. That's what we want to see. The reports this month, on top of the normal ARPA money that we had, you see the library, the ARPA library money, they got about $10,000 related to, to some of their programs. So, that's been the piece that picked up this month. I am a little disappointed in, in part with our December collections for hotel motel tax. We were down to about $13,000, which falls off as one of the lower numbers that we've had this fiscal year. So, we don't really have an explanation for that, but hopefully when we get back in the spring and we get bargains going and those kind of things, we'll get our hotel motel tax picking back up. As far as expenses go, we really expect ourselves to be in about 58% budget right now. If you look down the expense categories, you'll see that there's only a couple that are really over, that are already over that 58%. You know, one of them was, was the police. Brian and I talked through that. There's a couple big things that are in there that we want to make sure that we don't. There were some vehicle improvements that had to be done, where we retrofitted the cars, we would have to spend those. The other thing that was out there was the ammo. From last year, we picked up some ammunition that he didn't get in and finally came in and was paid for this year. So, that really was the big issue here in any of those departments. If you look to be able, net income, $237,000. I want you to remember that that does include ARPA funds, about $424,000. So, year to date right now, we're running an operating loss of about $125,000. We have not spent a lot of capital, project dollars that are in there. So, we kind of balance that out with what the year-to-date budget expected loss is at the end of the year, 780. We're ahead, of course, through that at this point. On the Perry Municipal Authority, nothing really big here. Our elected president is still continuing to exceed what our budgeted numbers were. We, we're happy with that. The electric department, as you know, is the biggest piece and takes care of the majority of our net income for the PMA. So, we're happy for that number is up. Rest of the expenses are pretty much in line. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Russ? Thank you, Russ. Do you want to continue, or you do intend to continue with the meeting? Or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll watch it on Facebook and then just call when we need to.
Okay, all right, thanks. All right.
All right, item nine, discussion of 2022 ODOT transportation alternate, alternative program.
That was a good song, but I'm not going to mess with it.
Okay, this is, this is a sidewalk grant that we.
Who do you want to send it to?
Okay. Just going back to.
This is phase three of our sidewalk project. The way I understand it is that we can apply for a $700,000 grant that'll get us from Brahms out to the baseball field. And our local match will be somewhere between $175,000 and $200,000. Is that accurate, Mr. Attorney?
Say that once again, please.
Okay, I say we're going to apply for this grant for $700,000. And our local match will be between $175,000 and $200,000.
That's true.
And it'll take us from Brahms to the baseball field.
That's right. And the cost of concrete has gone up. And so, we, we spoke to the architect today and the original estimate he thinks is, is probably 20% low, or the cost will actually be 20% higher. But if you take, if we get the maximum grant, which is $700,000, and we put $175,000 in it, we will be right there at what we think the cost will be under the current costs, unless because of, you know, what's happening in the world right now, costs go up more. So, it looks like we'll be able to come into budget with, with 80, 80% of it paid by the, by the.
ODOT.
By ODOT. Now, they have 60% more money this year. And so, you know, go big or go home. You know, if we had another project and if we had, I'm glad Russ isn't here, he'd be blown up. But if we had another project, a trails project or anything else, you know, now is the time to probably.
Does the route to school thing apply to this?
Yes, the route to school thing used to be at 100%, but now it's a portion of, it's placed under this program, so it's still at 80, 20%. But, you know, if you have a good application, you know, Mr. Shears says that you can get more than one grant, so.
I would like to see us, you know, we talked about trying to get sidewalks down Locust Street to the middle school, or what they call upper, lower level entry level. Can we do that?
Yes, we could. And, you know, Larry has the power to, under, under, under his authorization, to authorize, you know, 15, you know, $15,000 to do that. I'll tell you, the great thing about the program is, is that you can apply not only for the construction, so you don't have to have shovel-ready plans. I mean, you can apply for the engineering, you know, the architecture and, and the construction of it all in one, in one grant and pay 80, 20, you know, the city paying 20% on the whole thing. So, that's what some cities are doing. Now, will that be as good application as, as we have on this other one? Because we're shovel-ready, we're ready to go. And he thinks that this is a gimme. Of course, you know, don't count your chickens before they're hatched, but he thinks it is. But, you know, if you did have other dollars to match, this is the time to put in a project. And if, and if the council was, you know, kind of good with that, or thought that that was a good idea, Larry, under his authority, could do another proposal and, and we could at least try to, to, to get a grant.
Well, I'd like to see that a sidewalk going down Locust Street. We've talked about that for a while. And I don't know if, at the school zone, does that apply, like getting the lights put up and all that? Or is that, how does that work? Because we talked about putting a school zone back three or four blocks away from 15th Street down Locust.
You know, I don't know the answer. Let me call Shears, if he's in the office.
Where will the matching funds come from, I mean?
Well, you know, it would, it would come from, you know, ARPA dollars. If you had to understand that these projects go over multiple years. So, it's not like you have to put it in next year's budget. You could do next year's budget and the next year's budget. But, you know, it could come from ARPA, it could come from that. We haven't spent that, those initial dollars that we're going to use to remodel City Hall with. So, I mean, that's more than $200,000. That would be, that would be a giant match if, if you could reach that. But, you know, and then, you know, the, the final place is from the, is from the carry forward or from, from revenues that come in that aren't anticipated. But, you know, you know, right now is the time for, for grants, you know? And, and they're coming down from the Fed and they're going to come down fast and those that are shovel-ready are, are going to get it. You know, go big or go home is really the, the, the word right now. And of course, we're already doing that. Let's, you know, I mean, we've got a close to a $4 million replacing water projects that's going to cut us a minimum of $1 million grant right there. So, that's fantastic. We're going in for, if you agree, that CDBG, $300,000 grant.
I also would like to see us, you know, we done this thing out at CCC Lake, but I hear somebody complains that it just needs cleaned up. There's broken trees and branches and, but I think the school is more important, but the sidewalks. But I do think that we need to consider that at some point in time, just a critical out and clean out those, the brush and the, the broken rims and things.
The trees left over from the ice storm the other night? The trees left over from the ice storm?
Yeah, there's, well, people say I'm a trail, you know, I was only on it once, but there's just branches that lay over it and make it come. I think it's not pretty because of.
I'll look into that, yeah.
Some of them were probably from the ice storm previously even.
And, and these grants do go for trail grants. So, I mean, it can be sidewalks or trail grants. That's all included. So, that's a good, that's a good point, Gloria. You know, we need to remember that we did do that grant, you know, out there, but we could, if we applied, we could get two grants.
Well, that's one of the gene, but I just wanted to bring.
Well, the, the subject, I tried to make it broad.
Well, it's a discussion.
I mean, it's a discussion of, of that program, right? Didn't you say that?
Yep, alternative programs.
Yeah.
So, we could, we could make a motion to. No, there's no action, I'm sorry.
No, no, you could, you could, because all these items, you. No, no, you could, you could. Because all these items, you can either take, you can take action on any of these items. So on this, even though it says discussion only, you can take action on it. Because we have the caveat at the front of the agenda. All items are for discussion. And whatever...
Well, I'd like to see a motion to approve the application for that sidewalk grant, phase three, and also to instruct the city manager to investigate a sidewalk project for Locust Street.
I'm moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes, thank you. Item 10, discussion of repairs on fire engine number seven and on the purchase of a new fire engine.
Well, unfortunately, I don't have any updates on repairs for you, other than the update cost, which reflected in the agenda, the $38,727. And that is subject to change minimally if the, the plumbing from the new section of the pump has to be modified to make that section fit. He said if there, if there was a need to do that, he won't know until the new center section is in, arrives at his shop, and then he tries to install it. And that's when we'll know if, if any of the plumbing parts need to be redone.
Sounds great, sir.
I really have nothing more than that. It's just a waiting game.
But everyone here, Doug, did you get an estimate on the $400,000 truck with, with, rigged up with the equipment you need?
Yeah. So, so the estimate that he had submitted to me, I mean, he's, he's doing his best to put together some spec sheets and some cost estimates. Like you said a little bit ago, with the price of concrete, apparently the, the pricing is so fluid on equipment, it's difficult for him to nail down prices.
I think it's everything in life right now.
Yeah.
So, now, I remember there was a discussion, or an email, or something, that there were several trucks, but only one of them would fit in your house. Is that this one?
That's this one.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, what we do need is, we do need a, that truck with sufficient equipment on it to, to reach about $600,000. And then we apply for the $300,000 grant. So Marita is waiting. We've got the audit now, so that's what we're requiring. But, but now she needs that, she needs those estimates to, to file for that grant. Everyone is still good with us filing for that grant, correct? In, in fact, you know, that could be a motion out of this to, you know, authorize her to file that grant. We've already, of course, Larry's already authorized the, prepared, the preparation of it, and, and has already authorized the work that's being done on fire engine seven. So I really think a motion to authorize the filing of that grant, understanding at some point, we may need to come up with $300,000 to, to get this engine. This is your position, that we fix this one, but that, that we need an engine for the community that is, that's less, that's brand new and not 29 years old.
Absolutely. This, this does not fix our problem. Our, our problem is we have a 30-year-old truck that is in dire need of replacement, and we need a backup for it. Now, we have talked about with the chief of taking engine seven, once it's repaired. We have engine six that's also getting along in the tooth, and sort of rotate those two so that we're not using engine six. So to the point where we have to, to replace it sooner.
So where will we put this new truck if we have three? Want them in the parking lot?
His house?
We, we don't have room for three. We don't have room. We've discussed that up there. We've looked for various places where...
Do we have room across the street?
I don't know if height-wise, if it'll fit in there. I, I don't know. I don't know.
Because that has some high, I mean, I don't know about the door, but that, you know, it does have, I mean, inside is, is fairly high, if you can get it in. And that is a large, I mean, it, it's a large area. And it's right there, you know? I mean, do you have to have the truck exactly on site? I mean, under some NPDES rule or something?
No. And not that I, not that I'm aware of. I'll say it that way. As long as we, as long as it's accessible for us to respond from where there's, you know, gear located there. The, the biggest thing that we're needing right now is to be able to respond initially with a certain amount of volume and a certain capability of pumping enough gallons per minute once we arrive on scene with a certain number of personnel.
How many, how many gallons will this new truck hold?
I believe it is, it is also a 750-gallon tank, just like the, of the old engine seven.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir. Always glad for you to bring good news.
Mayor, can, can we move up item 12?
Yeah. Let's finish item 10.
Okay. Yeah.
I have a question on 10. If we apply for the grant and we get it, but we don't want to do it, what happens then?
Well, nothing, you know, I mean...
We don't want to be penalized? Do we have to pay a fee?
No, but, you know, Alicia, she's from NODA. She runs that program down there. And everybody's a person. I mean, I'm not saying you're penalized, but they sure want their cities to file, you know, applications that they'll, if they, if they do it, that they do it. But quite frankly, you'll make another city happy. Because, you know, it'll be the one that just, because they put them out on a list. And it'll be the, it'll be that, that next city will get that grant. They'll be very happy you didn't take it.
And then in the back of somebody's head, they'll say, "Happy?"
Yeah, it's Alicia. I know Alicia. So she runs the program. And Marita and Alicia worked together over in NODA, because she was in NODA for years.
So what kind of grant is this?
This is a CDBG grant, yeah. Just like, we, we mostly have those on water and sewer projects. We tried to have this on the phase five, but they said...
Yeah.
That, that...
Income levels.
Income levels were too high where we're doing it.
All right. So do we want to make a motion to instruct the city manager to go ahead and apply for this grant?
It says the city remains committed to applying for a CDBG. They need a grant for $300,000. So does that mean it's already underway?
No, no, you've got, no, if, we want to know if you want us to. And you, you do know, if we get the grant, I think we talked about this, there is an administrative fee of, of $20,000 to administer the grant. But, but no charge upfront.
I'll move that we apply for the grant.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Who's our grant writer now?
Marita Woodard with NODA. She'd been with NODA forever. Now she's with Park Hill, which is an engineering firm that we're doing some business with.
Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Okay, let's move to item 12 right quick. We'll come back to 11. Receive recommendation from the Perry Planning Commission on the application of JTS Investments LLC for the Family Dollar Dollar Tree Retail Store at 607-615-625-627, Fur Street, Perry, Oklahoma, 73077. And with a legal description of lots 25, or 22 to 25, block 64 Northwest Perry, addition to the city of Perry, Noble County, State of Oklahoma, herein after the subject track take action on site plan review.
Counsel, I apologize. I didn't make enough copies of this, so these are kind of cut down a little bit.
Here, I'm going to give you the unstable copy.
This is a pretty, pretty simple build-out. But this is all for the, oh, you've already got one? Okay. You don't make too many. I apologize on the short copies, because they got cut off a little bit. We just met with planning commission. They approved, well, they made a recommendation for you guys to approve. This is a standard build that these guys are now doing in lots of different municipalities. Not really a whole lot for me to lead up to that, unless you guys have some questions. Levi, also with Iron Horse Development, that is doing the civil side of all of this, is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Let's start by taking, how many lots is this going to be?
So they purchased four lots along the north side of the 600 block of Fur. In your minds, if you can picture where the alley is next to, I think that's Senior Sees, over to the two-story White House, all of that is going to be demolished here in the near future. So you'll see some dirtwork and stuff like that going on. And then they're going to start putting up their building.
To the...
To the west.
It will include that two-story house?
Yes.
So all the houses between Panda Buffet and the gas station will be gone?
There's two White Houses just to the east of Panda Buffet, and those will be the only ones left on the block. And I do believe you said that you guys had some plans to improve on the alley to the east side there? Is that correct?
We're just going to connect in.
Yep. This is Levi Vaughn.
Yeah, I'm Levi Vaughn with Iron Horse Development. We're helping with the development of it. So we're coordinating with the survey, civil, architectural side. We're the ones that brought the project together. There shouldn't be any improvements needed on that alley to the east, but we are going to connect into it with our parking lot. Anywhere we're going to have any traffic modeled will be paved, will be concrete. We're not going to use that alley to the north. And then other than that, Brian is correct, this is pretty standard development. This is what Family Dollar Dollar Tree is calling the combo store for a rural market. And, yeah, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So you'll be able to access the parking lot from the east, from that convenience store?
Yep. Yeah, so that, we'll connect into that public alley. So it'll be their parking lot, a public alley, and then technically our parking lot after that. So there'll be an entrance, if you include that alley entrance. And we'll have another one further back to the, back to the west, so.
Okay. Any questions, counsel?
Planning commission reviewed this and, and approved it unanimously, and recommended approval of the cyclone here.
Thank you, Levi.
Thank you.
So we need to...
Approve it.
Approve the cyclone.
Yes.
I might make a motion that we approve the recommendation of Perry's planning commission to receive us.
It's like planning. A second? Is it Curtis? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes, thank you.
Do we know when they expect to start working?
I said about a month, didn't you, Levi?
Yeah, I think so. So there's the homeowner, the clothes on the two-story house, and he had a month after closing to move out. So that's coming up here, I think at the end of this month. Then we're going to finalize the demo permits with Brian. And usually it's four to five months after we start demo, then everything will be completed. So it'll be this year for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for meeting with us. We're excited to be in Perry. Thank you.
Item number 11. Approve the following payments to Park Hill in the following amounts...
We can go back if you want to, because we skipped 11.
That's where I'm at. I'm sorry.
Eleven.
It's all right. It's all right. It's all right.
Been a long day.
Yeah.
You know, and I got here today, so...
I know.
Yeah, okay.
Couldn't get to City Hall, but maybe the rest of them couldn't get there.
Right. I got here.
I know. I thought it was pretty bad Bryce could get there, but city manager can't.
Well, he got there late.
No, he didn't.
All right. Approve the following payments at Park Hill in the following amounts for the following dates and work. Improve airport drainage for the FAA grant administration, construction administration, and inspection, construction materials testing dated October 28, 2021, in the amount of $2,500. Improve airport drainage for FAA grant administration, construction administration, and inspection, construction material testing dated November 30, 2021, in the amount of $8,485. FAA grant administration, construction administration, and inspection, construction material testing dated December 20, 2021, in the amount of $18,470. FAA grant administration, construction administration, inspection, construction material testing dated January 24, 2022, in the amount of $2,895. So we need to pay these bills. That's what we're asking for.
I should approve the payments to Park Hill?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes, thank you. Item 13. Consider approval of a grant agreement with the Malls Zone Family Affiliated Fund of the Oklahoma City Community Foundation in amount of $500,985.65. Larry, are you going to have a discussion about this?
Two of these things, you'll notice, are for, for the fire department. Chief, type one ambulance is what we pretty much have now. This is a replacement of, of an older unit that is getting along in the tooth. And air packs. You might explain what air packs are.
Okay. So I'll start with the ambulance, if I could. A type one ambulance is basically a one-ton Ford pickup. And it's no different than a farmer's feed truck. It just have a, it has a box on the back. And if a patient ever talks to you, they'll tell you it rides about the same as the fire farmer's feed truck. But, yeah, we've, we've had some turbo issues. We've, we've replaced the turbo in that unit twice. And we're pretty certain that something happened again today, because it's in what we call a limp mode, pretty much, at this juncture. So anyhow, that type one ambulance is, is exactly what we currently have. That ambulance is a 2012. And I apologize, I don't know the mileage right offhand. But I know it, it is at that 10-year mark, and that seems to be about the life cycle of, of an ambulance. You know, they set in that bay, and then they suddenly get started and driven hard and fast, and county roads, and everywhere. So anyhow, that one is, is definitely starting to see its better days behind it. So the air packs are anytime the fire suppression, anytime when they engage in, in fire suppression, they wear, they want clean air, because they don't want to breathe the smoke and the gases that are off-gassing off of whatever's burning. So there's a harness, it looks like a, like a backpack, and it has the air tank on the back. It's just breathing air that we're breathing right now. It basically comes out of a very well-filtered air compressor that just pulls in outside air, and it pressures up those bottles. And then they wear a face piece where the, there's a regulator with the hose. It's like a scuba tank. It's just without the U. That's why they just call it an SCBA instead of a scuba for fire. So, but anyhow, we initially looked at 23 of those. And that was going to give us actually about three that we were going to be able to use for training. We typically, when we send people out of town, we had some at a, at a training last week in Edmund, and they have to take air packs. We've got two that are attending the fire academy at Choctaw right now. When they leave to go to their training, they have to take those air packs with them. And then when we have a fire, we don't have two or three air packs. So we were hoping to get a couple of extra ones. That's why we were asking for that 23. That is a, there is contract, state contract pricing. I believe it's like SW 241, or whatever that state bid contract pricing is, NASBO, or... I believe it's like SW 241 or whatever that state bid contract pricing is, NASBO or... Anyhow, it looks like to get 23 of those is not gonna be able to happen for that amount of money. So, what we've looked at doing is if we were successful in the CDBG grant, in an effort to meet the required dollar amount, is to add those onto that truck. I spoke with Rita, and she did say that those air packs and some loose equipment could go toward that purchase, and we figured into that amount. So, that's our plan right now. It's looking like we're gonna be able to maybe get 17 or 18 of those. And so, when I talked with the gentleman today that's trying to put the bid together, he did put on the bid sheet five of those. He didn't even put a price there yet because he said that's one of those things that is continually, I mean, daily fluctuating. Just some materials are just not even available right now, and he said some of them are literally fluctuating every day, so. Thank you, Russell.
$59,676 is also for a mini excavator. We have one excavator, which is in the water department. It's beginning to give us problems. So, this one will be a new one. It goes to the street department. And what we've done in the past is when one department doesn't have the equipment, the other department loans them the equipment, so they work together. However, if the one that... The water department goes out, we have none. So, this is a good request on that part. We'll talk about the Perry Carnegie Library roof repair here, another agenda item. And then, two Ford interceptors for the police department. This will be the second year of that rotation, that plan that the family, the foundation, I'm sorry, had asked for. They asked that we take all of our equipment, all of our vehicles, and put them on a rotation plan. I've shared that with the council. Be updating that here shortly for that, so. That's the request.
So, did this request come before the council, before you sent it in?
It did not.
I thought we requested that.
What I have done in the past is to send this to you and to Jamie. I did not do that this time. I'm sorry.
So, when you say the other mini excavator's in bad shape, like, I mean, motor problems, hydraulic problems, I mean, like, do...
They usually have to work on it just about every time that they bring... They take it out.
How old is it?
I'll have to look that up.
So, what are your plans, Brian, for these two new cars?
Well, right now, we have 14 officers. We have 13 cars. We do have the best vehicles we've ever bought since I've been here is the 2013 Tahoe's. They're bulletproof. I mean, they're still running right now. One of the Tahos is our K-9 unit. So, what I wanna do, whenever we can get the new cars, it's gonna help with the cost as far as equipment and helping out. Get rid of one of the Tahos. It is a 2013. I'm just shooting in the... I think we can get at least $5,000. That's better than 500 to 1,000, what we usually get on trade-ins on our vehicles because they're shot when we get rid of them. The other cars we have, where we're blessed to get, the Chargers in 2016. They're going on six years old. As of now, they are... They're out of warranty because we've had nothing but issues with every single Dodge that we've bought. Everyone, the radiators, the fans break, the radiator, the fan goes into the radiator, tears everything up. All eight cars we've had have had to have those recleared. We had a driveshaft go out on one the other day. We had the lifters go out on the other. I called the warranty. They're still under 100,000 miles, but it was only good for five years. In March of last year, we were completely out of warranty. So, it's hurting our budget, taking cars nonstop right now to get them repaired. I mean, I hate doing that, but we have to have a car to respond to calls, and we gotta fix them. So, we're just wanting... It's time to really look at the Chargers and getting rid of those. We can still get pretty good trade-in, I think, right now because they are anywhere from 45,000 to 70,000 on the miles. And we could get a decent trade-in on the future with those to look forward to, get rid of those. But we wanna get rid of one Tahoe, and that puts us back at 14 cars with 14 officers.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel, what would you like to do with the grant, applicator of the grant award?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Item 14. Consider award of a bid and execute the public construction contract with Champion Roofing LLC for the replacement of the roof and decking at the Perry Carnegie Library in the amount of $49,750.
Bryce, would you like to take this, please? You did a lot of good work on this, and we really appreciate what you've done. You've been able to... It's way below the original bid.
Yeah, in working with Champion, since this is all competitive quotes, remember we had the ordinance on the 100,000, you know, and under that, you can do it by competitive quotes. We got with one of the bidders, and that was the low bidder. That was the low bidder. And we talked them into more work, didn't we, Pam?
We sure did.
Not just doing a part of the library roof, but doing it all and tearing it all off, and then putting up all-new decking, and then there's a laminate material, and then putting all-new tile on there. So, you know, I mean, and there are leaks in the library right now. And so, it will all... It'll all be replaced for less than $50,000. This guy, we talk about prices going up. That decking material doubled in price. It was gonna double within a day or two of the time he gave me this price, and he said, "Well, when can they approve it?" I said, "We're waiting for this grant, you know, to see if we can get that." And he went ahead and bought it anyways. He figured that he'd use it if he didn't. So, he's prepared to come... If you approve this today, he's coming on Monday and starting. So, I think we'll have real good weather there, and he thinks it'll take him a week to get it done. So, it's the administrative recommendation to do this. The bids went as much as, you know, 60% again more money than what this is. So, this really is a good price.
I'd like to motion that we'll award the bid and execute the public construction labor.
Thank you, Laura.
I just have one question.
Yes.
That... So, that 51,000 that's listed above on that grant, that's for that specifically? Okay.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Item 15. Consider approval of the inter-local government agreement with the electric plan review and services with Oklahoma Municipal Power Authority.
This was an agreement that I prepared. I've sent it to OMPA. They haven't come back with their, you know, with their comments yet. We're still trying to finalize agreements on this economic development project where this will be pieced in. I wanted to put this on the agenda so everyone could take a look at what it might look like. And of course, what it looks like is they review the electrical bid that we have. They make recommendations to save us money. They go out and bid the items for us, and then their crew assists us with putting in underground electric. And I say assist us. I mean, they'll act as the general contractor. And then, if we have any in-kind services that we can do, for instance, trenching or, you know, for them, we can cut down that cost. So, this is in their hands. There would be... I would think until we got that document back from them, it would be premature to approve this. And so, if you can continue to the next meeting, I think that would be appropriate. But I did want to give you an agreement and show you what that would look like.
I make a motion that we continue this item to the next meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Item 16. Consider making nominations for OMG 2022 notice of trustee election. Item 16, in the back, has a list.
Maybe the city manager from Broken Bow would be a good one because their population in their city is about the same as ours. A little bit lower, but I think... I looked at the others, and there's quite a few larger cities in it. And unless somebody knows them personally, that would be my recommendation.
Is... Are they wanting to stay on? It says that their positions are expiring.
But it doesn't say if they wanna continue to, does it?
No, it doesn't. I mean, I don't know. How do you feel, Bryce?
Well, they don't say that they're not going off, so.
I mean, we can do that. I mean, I don't have a problem with that, and...
Yeah, this is really to allow us to nominate two candidates. So, if we have no one to nominate at this point, like if none of us wanna do it, there's no action to be taken.
Okay.
Okay. You know, I don't know that anyone wants to do that.
Kevin? No?
No.
You know, that's the one that we keep putting Russ back on.
Yeah.
You know, keep sending him, and he gets closer and closer. So, if you wanted to, you could nominate Russ. We keep doing it. In fact, if we don't nominate Russ, he'll probably be upset that we didn't do it. I just thought of that. We should probably nominate Russ.
He's gonna be calling in about 10 seconds.
Yeah, about 10 seconds. Let's see if this... Let's see if the lights up or not. Oh, you know what? No! Man, that's communications for you.
I made the motion to nominate Russ.
Well, wait, he's calling in right now. Has to say, "Yes, Russ."
Delays for the birds.
Okay, all right, thanks. Bye.
Okay, item 17. Consider payment of nota for the CIP report and underlying work in the amount of $20,000. Is this for a grant, Bryce?
No, this is for work that Shishmita did on that CIP report.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The GPS and all that. That's the payer for that.
And we've already saved the grant money for it.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to nota.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. 18. Consider approval of ordinance number 2022-03 amending the zoning of the subject tract from its current zoning of C2 General Commercial Zoning District with C5 Planting Commercial Park District saving severability repealer and declaring an emergency. This is the same thing that we saw last meeting about a guard shack at the 89ers Truck Stop thing. Whatever they call it now.
You know, I think I made an error in the agenda twice. You know, I've said in the agenda that a trailer is permitted, but it's mine. After reading this section that I'm now handing out, I don't think that this was ever supposed to be a trailer permitted in that C5. Now, I think that you can have a sleeping room, you know, because it clearly says you can have a sleeping room. But it's certainly not to put a, what you would think of, a travel trailer or a mobile home or manufactured home there so that the couple could live there, and then he could perform some watchman duties or other duties. And that is not the purpose. And it's that... That's not a permitted purpose in this district. I mean, here's the language right here. I mean, I suppose at the last meeting, I just didn't go back and read the language, okay? And the language is very specific that in a C5 Plant Commercial Park District, you can have any use except dwellings. Well, that's pretty specific, isn't it? Permitted in the C2 General Commercial District. And just in case you didn't get it the first time, they're gonna tell you again. No dwelling use except sleeping facilities required by caretakers or night watchmen employed on the premises, which, you know, to me means that there is space inside the building that they could knock out or if they could build a portion to it, you know, and that part of his duties, he doesn't live there. Part of his duties are, you know, like firemen, right? Like firemen. They're out there, and if there's an alarm or something, or they wake up, you know, they hear something, they can get up and do something. I mean, that's the purpose of it, is it's not to allow a residential use out there. So, what we talked about at the last meeting, that we needed to amend this section, perhaps talk about amending. After reviewing it, I don't think we need to amend it. I think the interpretation here is fairly clear. And that is... And I apologize, I'm probably the one that did it because of the language that I put here. But before I did it, I didn't clearly read what the section says. Now, it's up to you. No one is entitled to this C5 zone, okay? You don't have to grant it. It is similar to the zoning that Seth Wadley has across the street. But this is across the street, and it's near agricultural use and all. And the zoning that they have is sufficient to allow them the use, and it's a reasonable use that they have. But if the council approved this zone, okay, if they approved it, we would not allow a residential use to be made out there. It'd have to be pursuant to the business there. And setting up a trailer for a couple to come out there and live is not within this purpose. It's very clear. Brian, do you have something to add?
I checked with a couple of the municipalities, kind of, on what they had done on things like that. And there was a few words that they suggested adding that we just don't have. Didn't really need it, but then what they found was somebody that wouldn't find a loophole and try to take advantage of where they were. So, the words that they added were overnight watchman, so that it was an understood value. You know, you were there at a certain time. You were gone by a certain time. And the other word, because I know, like, we suffice for, you know, residential use or dwelling. They said that we allow for, what was it, temporary, what was it, recreational vehicle use. So, basically, again, it's just restating the fact of it's only gonna be here for a certain amount of time, and it's gone. You're not camping out all night. You're not camping... Or, I mean, all day, and then where it's going... Or, you know, anyways, you get where I'm going with that.
Try to pardon.
Sure. The flip side on that, because I stopped and I asked Lowe's over in Enid, because what they have is like in their little, you know, brick patio section and all that, at night, they have somebody that just brings a camper out there, stays at night. That's their security shack, pretty much. And they have an understood agreement with the guy, like, you're here closing, or an hour before closing, you're gone an hour before open. So, it's kind of that same... Do we need to amend the language? That's a Bryce, you know, question. In my mind, it's... If we state it, it's pretty well-understood. question. In my mind, it's, if we state it, it's pretty well understood, you know, to.
Yeah. Using the words that he, he has.
Yes. I, I think what he has suffices. It's just up to you if you want to clear it up, you know, say it in there so that way it's clearly understood, or we go with that and just expect that people understand. No residential, no dwelling.
Hey, I'm always for more clarity.
No, I agree.
And if that provides more clarity, then let's, then, you know, I, I would be all in favor of amending that. To do that, we just take it back before the planning commission. And I wasn't at that meeting. And apparently at that planning commission, they were very emphatic that they didn't want, at least they stated that today, that they didn't want, you know, a, a permanent.
The reason that it was tabled was exactly what you said. So, or, I mean, they approved it with the caveat that, hey, this is probably going to get brought up. And then you brought it up at the next meeting.
But aren't there a couple of issues? The request is to rezone. And the, the C5 zoning would be appropriate for that corner. Then there's another issue, as I see it, or another, another request, separate request, that would be to put a night watchman's facility there, which you're pointing out wouldn't fit as, as they have defined it. If they built a room on or something like that, maybe. But would it be appropriate to?
Go step up to the podium, state your address.
Wouldn't it be appropriate? And I don't have any underlying motive here, other than just addressing the request as it was presented, and that was to rezone from C2 to C5.
Here's the only problem is that if they grant that rezoning tonight, right now, as it's written, by right, they could go.
Okay.
So you're, you're kind of rolling the dice on that of, are we going to have to deal with, well, I didn't understand it to read that way and then.
Okay.
Yeah, it's always better to be specific. And we hadn't had an opportunity to discuss that.
Yeah. I think it would be to, to some people's advantage. It'd be to the advantage of the property if it was zone C5. But I, I agree, we wouldn't want to allow a separate housing facility to be sitting there.
I think that's what it's going to be.
I, I tend to agree on the rezoning issue with him. But I think, and this would be just my recommendation, that before you go that route, we probably need to specify what exactly the night watchman is allowed to do.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So let's continue this. In fact, you could table it to be brought back again. I apologize because I'm the one that created the confusion and I apologize for that. But let's just table this until we can put that through that land use process on, on amending what you see here.
Motion to table, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes, thank you. Item 19, review bids received in the citywide sanitary sewer phase five capital improvement projects discussed, determined, and award the bid to the lowest responsible bidder. Looks like we got three bids. They're all pretty competitive, looks like. But we do have a low bidder.
And, and we've checked out the references and the, the references are good. You know, we've sent out letters to the, to the community members who this is going to affect. And as we've talked about, there's not much of an effect because we're doing pipe bursting. But we've sent out letters to them and, and we've had surveyors look at it. And we're currently preparing temporary construction easements, which don't get filed of record, but allow us to go in there. And to do this, there's going to be one easement that I believe that we're going to have to receive. Now, if you award this, you know, if you award it, just awarding the bid, that doesn't give the contractor any rights until you approve the contract. Between awarding the bid and approving the contract, it might not be on your next meeting because I'm not going to have you approve the contract until after we get all those documents. But, you know, I do think it, it, it's appropriate to let, you know, these bidders know who's going to get it because they're all, you know, they're all not scheduling other work, you know, on the, on the chance that they can get this. Now, Urban Contractors has done, I believe, three other of these, and they've done a fantastic job. But, you know, the whole purpose of bidding is to get your, your pencil sharp. That isn't to say that you couldn't approve it with Urban Contractors and say, we like their work, they, they work for us well. And, you know, you could do that. But if you did that, you'd have to list those reasons as a part of your motion. But we've really checked on Horseshoe. They come in, they do it, and they, they get it done and move out is, is what we're telling. And Will Sheet, who I've kind of put in charge, feet, boots on the ground on this program, that is his recommendation.
Now, they're from like Houston or somewhere.
That's correct. Yeah, but they've done work in this state and they, they, it's been, it's been very well accepted.
Where's your recommendation, counsel?
I'm moved to approve the bid from Horseshoe Construction for $549.75.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes.
I, I guess we didn't say it here. This will be paid for by ARPA dollars, just so that everyone knows that. This is where we're putting our ARPA.
I have that question written down here.
Yes. Well, I, that's why I said it.
Thank you.
Good.
Item 20, status of Ward 1, Post 1, Council seat based on the lack of filing for a candidate. Consider appointment of qualified person or other methods of appointment successor. Okay, you'll remember that we had 60 days to make a nomination and fill that seat. And if that doesn't happen, we have to go out for election. So we did that. Nobody filed. So now we're back to, are we back to another 60 days, Bryce, to?
You know, it, it doesn't say the statute, and I printed it out. You'll see it. Oh, here it is. I can give you a copy of it. Just read the, and, and our statute is just like, I mean, our charter, it reads just like, just like the statute. So Glory, you did a good job there with the charter command. But if you read it, it says if a vacancy is not filled by the special election or at the special town meeting, of course, it's not going to be filled because nobody filed, right? It shall be filled by appointment as provided for in this subsection. So I suppose the answer to your question is, yeah, it goes back to 60 days. You've got 60 more days to fill it because that's what the subsection says. I'll just hand that to you. So everybody gets one.
I'll call the election board to try to get a list of people in that ward, but they don't.
Yeah, you can't do that. I tried to too.
I don't know how to do it.
Yeah.
And I, I just, I don't know people that live in that ward.
I'll go to Act Data Scout and pull up the map of that area and then start clicking on houses and see whose names come up.
Yeah, I think we actively need to find, find some applicants. And we can do a little bit better job maybe on Facebook or something. You know, a picture of the map and we're looking for qual, qualified applicants. Here are the qualifications. Please submit, you know, if you're interested, write something up and tell us about yourself. But let's make it appeal to the people.
Item 21, consider approval of specifications and a date set for opening bids for the wastewater treatment plant handrail replacement project. We've got a basin out there that has handrails that have fell apart and destroyed and deteriorated. And we're worried about people falling in the pit. So.
So what date did we set? April?
Of March 16th.
Oh, yeah, March 16th.
We got a grant for this, I believe, right? One of the note, nota grant?
Yes, $40,000.
Okay.
And, and Cowan has prepared the plans and specs and the date is March 14th at 2:00, is that correct?
16th.
16th, March 16th at 2:00. We took a look at, you know, we wanted to make sure there was enough time for people to get in their apps. And so if you want to, to approve the plans and specs and the advertisement and to receive bids, March 16th at 2:00, that would be the appropriate motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes. 22, consider approval of a charter oak production company LLC Drilling Perry to GH with surface location of southwest quarter and southeast quarter of section 3121 north, northwest Noble County, Oklahoma upon a payment of $5,000 for surface location pipeline damage and other, and other, or I'm sorry, and water usage pursuant to the original Nadel Guzman Energy LLC oil and gas leads.
Yeah, I remember when we entered into this, we were very excited. This was a secondary recovery type operation there because it had supplied really good money to Perry over the years. And of course, you know, when you produce this, you produce your gas. And then, you know, it's a secondary recovery. You go in with, with other means of extracting. This is a new well site. When we entered into that contract, that lease agreement back then, we agreed what the, what the damages would be. That was all part of getting them to do it. It wasn't a time when oil and gas was really, was making $105 a barrel. Is that, is that what I heard today? The, the price went up to, it was, it was, it was more like, you know, 25. And, you know, and, and so we established some of those things back then. This Charter Oak is the new, is the new folks. I sent this off to our surveyor to make sure there'd be no impact on the lake. There's not, the original lease agreement does have some watershed requirements under it, but there's really no impact on the lake at all. And so, you know, we have contracted to do this. They need to pay us. And, and we will supervise that operation.
Motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes, thank you. And new business, it needs to come before the council's decision.
Mayor, not really as a part of new business, but 24 and 25 and 26, Larry and I spoke before this meeting and we're not really, I mean, we've got some stuff we could talk about. But, you know, thank you, five folks that came, because we had a lot of business that we needed to get. But I, I would really, I've been, I've been working on a lot of other stuff. And I know I need to.
Okay, we're going to skip over 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, okay?
That's what I want to do.
And we're going to go straight to 27.
We could.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a short, roll call, please. Just need a short explanation.
Raise your hand.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes.